How you doing, chief?
Struggling.
Good, good. Showing novelty, huh?
It's a win? It's not a win. All right. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. At 7:00 PM, please rise for the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll call to order this meeting of the town council. The first item of business is not listed in your agenda. We have two items to consider adding to the agenda by unanimous consent of the council. They will be, upon approval, assigned to a person to take care of. The reason they're both here is they're both very time-sensitive. The first of those items is the use of the Adamsville Field, and the second is a request to close the street in front of the community center during a concert.
I'll make a motion to approve both of these put on by unanimous consent.
A second.
Motion's made and seconded to approve these items for addition by unanimous consent. I would propose that we assign the use of the Adamsville Field to Councilor McHugh, who is our liaison with the Recreation Committee, and that the item for closing the street in front of the community center be assigned to the town administrator. I entertain a motion there, too.
I'll make that motion.
A second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor of that motion?
Aye.
Thank you very much. We'll then turn to the public hearing to consider amending Chapter 14 of the Little Compton Town Code in two sections. One of those sections is Section 14511, a new item J. The second is Section 1431, modification to Section C. I would propose that those who wish to speak with respect to this order themselves in the order it appears in the agenda. Are there any public comments with respect to the stormwater mitigation plan? Seeing none in the audience, are there any comments with respect to Section 1431?
I did have a comment on the
Oh, excuse me. Go ahead, Counselor.
...water mitigation plan. As usual, we let the public speak first. But my question on this is a 600-square-foot stormwater mitigation, which generally requires drainage from the downspouts of the building to a piping that goes to a water mitigation or a rain garden is what they call it now. I know 600 square feet is 600 square feet, but if somebody's building a house, they have to go to an architect. They lay it all out. They generally have to have a septic system approval for a house. Now, if somebody wants to build a simple garage, 20-by-30 garage, I think it's kind of putting it quite a bit of an onus on them to have a plan drawn up by an architect or by an engineer to put in a rain garden. I can see it for a regular house, but I don't believe it should be required for a garage or something. I should say it's garage. Usually, you have an architect put a simple schematic together, what the garage is. But there's no, generally, as far as I know, there's no engineering design for a septic or anything like that. So that's a question that maybe the building official might want to answer for me. Or is it somebody on the planning board answered that? Okay.
Is the building official?
Yes, sir.
Would you come to the microphone, please? Thank you.
I'm not trying to put you on the spot, Peter, but I just think it's an added extra expense. You're going to build a house. You've got the money to build a house. Somebody wants to build 20-by-30 garage to put their cars in, they're going to have to go to an engineer to have a drawer and made of and whatnot. Is that my understanding?
Yeah, it's based on the stormwater manual, the Rhode Island Stormwater Manual. And I actually spoke to a guy from DEM regarding residential stormwater mitigation plans. And for something small, typically for a garage or something like that, they'll just have a gravel trench underneath the gutter line. And that doesn't necessarily have to be done by an engineer. So it's just an effort to try to reduce issues of runoff and soil erosion, et cetera.
I know what it's for. So they would just have to have some piping going into a simple dry well with no engineering diagram?
I would, yeah, I would accept that, you know, based on what I learned this past week.
Okay. I mean, I just didn't want them to have so much expense of hiring an engineer.
Yeah, it can get involved for a big house where they'll either do a rain garden or a baffle system underground.
Right. I mean, I think as everybody knows, engineers are expensive. Plus, I think the main problem with an engineer is they take forever. What if you?
Do they?
Yeah, well, I'm pretty sure they do, having used them. So, okay, thank you, Peter.
Peter, I have one more question, actually. On the same line, you know, could another, could a different building official interpret that differently based on what you've learned? Or is that, or is that going to be pretty standard?
Uh, no, not according to the gentleman I spoke to at DEM, and he's the stormwater guy. Just can't remember his name.
Thank you.
There doesn't appear to be any specification in the new proposed ordinance language that would require an engineer to develop the plan.
Right. Right, it's based on the stormwater manual and their guidelines. And again, this guy that I spoke to earlier this week regarding who is required. On a larger house, when you get into an intricate design, yeah, an engineer is required. But he said for small stuff, just eat it.
I can understand doing, if you go do an ISDS, I can understand putting a rain garden in there for a residential dwelling. But I didn't want to have somebody go through the extra hoops they're going to have to meet to go to an engineer and put a formula into the rain garden. Because there is a formula you're supposed to use, the square footage.
There is, yeah. And actually, in Tiverton, they require stormwater mitigation for sheds.
All right, thank you, Peter.
Sure.
Thanks. Any other questions on that matter? Moving to the second item in the public hearing, it's the amendment to Section 1431C. We also have related to that an input from Jeffrey Manning, which I would say in a single page summarizes his and the comments we've received from a number of other people with respect to this proposal. Specifically, that the proposal is, first of all, in his view, unnecessary in that the manual already requires that if a use does not appear in the use table, it is not permitted. And of course, as we know, the zoning official has the discretion to make a determination if a specific use is not listed, what he thinks that specific use might fall under, which is itself an appealable event. So in both cases, either the specificity is there or a person can seek the opinion of the building official to clarify that. I don't know if there are other comments or other issues that one might wish to raise. Yes, sir? On this issue of Paragraph 1431C?
So my name is Larry Anderson. I'm going to read a letter I prepared. "I share the concern addressed by the Planning Board's proposal that Section 1431C of the Little Compton Town Code may require amendment to clarify procedures for, first, determining whether a proposed use is permitted under current use regulations; and, two, providing a means for permitting a new use not permitted under current use regulations. However, I believe that the proposed amendment may create as much or more confusion and ambiguity than exists under the status quo. Thus, I suggest that the council not adopt the proposed amendment in its current form. I believe that the current proposal requires further review and possible revision." I'll just interrupt to remind council members that the Planning Board in February of 2019 offered a different version of an amendment to this, which is quite simple. It also called for a zoning board of review treatment of special use permit that was not specified. That got swallowed up in the agricultural, the farm use matter and has been shoveled ever since. So this is not new. The circumstances and context were somewhat different. But some of the same questions, I think, were, are raised about the appealability of building official
Decisions.
...opinions. I think some of the same questions might be related here. Anyway, that's just an aside. Anyway, I share some of the concerns raised by Jeff Manning in his August 22, 2022, letter to the council concerning the proposed amendments, especially those raised in points one and two of his letter, namely, and these are my words, not his. "The proposed authority of the zoning board to review, of review to grant special use permits for new uses not specifically listed in the current use tables appears to be, at least to me, inconsistent with other provisions of the zoning ordinance, including but not limited to Section 14-95, which is the section pertaining to special use permits." The section Mr. Manning cites, "That section requires the zoning board of review to document specific findings in granting a special use permit. Subsection A of that section provides in part that the board shall record in its findings that, quote, 'the special use is specifically authorized by this chapter,' and setting forth the exact subsection of this chapter containing the jurisdictional authorization, and that, quote, 'the special use meets all the criteria set forth in the subsection of this chapter authorizing such special use.'" However, the proposed amendment, as I read it, offers no conditions, guidelines, or limits concerning how the zoning board of review should evaluate or define such proposed new currently unlisted uses, including criteria authorizing a specific new special use. By way of contrast and example, the current ordinance defines and lists specific uses and criteria for granting special use permits in Table A, that's principal use regulations; Table 1B, accessory use regulations; the special conditions included in Section 145691L, that's accessory uses, customary home use occupations. There are numerous special use provisions there, as well as specific uses and specific criteria for special use permits in zoning ordinance sections pertaining to solar energy systems and wireless communication facilities. The zoning ordinance, again, in my non-legal opinion, but just from reading the ordinances, does not appear to authorize the zoning board of review to approve special use permits for uses that are not specifically authorized in the ordinance, which can't be cited by exact subdivision, and for which no criteria exists for authorizing a new special use. In other words, the zoning board of review, again, in my opinion, is not authorized to effectively and unilaterally, in effect, amend the zoning ordinance. I don't see how the proposed amendment can provide such authority. The proposed amendment permitting the zoning board of review to authorize such new uses could, as Mr. Manning suggests, set a precedent for de facto amendment of the zoning ordinance as a form of spot zoning, in effect. I don't believe this is or should be the zoning board's job or responsibility. Couple more points. In addition to Mr. Manning's concerns, I have others, which I'll try to be concise about. There exists a current readily available provision in 14-9.11, Adoption Amendment and Administration of the Zoning Ordinance, to amend the zoning ordinance to include a new use or uses. That provision is exactly what we're doing tonight. And the only difference would be that an individual or business would propose an ordinance amendment, not a town board. It's exactly what we're doing here. This provision mirrors Section 452451 of the Rhode Island General Laws for Adoption and Amendment of Zoning Ordinance. As I understand the ordinance and the law, there is no restriction concerning who may propose an amendment of the zoning ordinance or zoning map. The ordinance and the law provides procedures for public notice, public hearing, planning board review, and town council approval of an amendment. This procedure does not appear significantly more onerous or expensive than the procedure for applying for a special use permit for a currently unlisted use that's called for in the proposed amendment. In this regard, I believe the remedy proposed to grant such authority to the zoning board is both unnecessary and inconsistent with the current zoning ordinance. It is the council's responsibility to define and add new uses by amending the zoning ordinance pursuant to Section 14911. It's not, I don't believe it's the zoning board's authority. I think it's, falls on the council. And finally, and this hearkens back to the previous questions about appealability of these kinds of decisions by the zoning board or the building official. I believe the right and ability of Little Compton residents and citizens to appeal approval by the zoning board of review of a new use by special use permit may be significantly more constrained than the right and ability to appeal adoption of a new use by the town council pursuant to this procedure, 14-911. Pursuant to the section of the zoning ordinance regarding appeals to the Superior Court, an appeal of a zoning board decision can be made to Superior Court by, quote, "an aggrieved party." An aggrieved party is designed by ordinance and state law as, A, any person or person or entity or entities who can demonstrate that their property will be injured by a decision of any officer or agency responsible for administering this chapter; or B, anyone requiring notice pursuant to this chapter. By contrast, Section 14914, with regard to the amendment or enactment of the zoning ordinance, an appeal to Superior Court may be taken by an aggrieved party or by any legal resident or landowner of the town or by any association of residents or landowners of the town. And finally, I believe the language of the proposed amendment, again, this is just as I read it, only amplifies the current confusion concerning the sequence of a requesting party. The language used in the ordinance must follow to determine whether or not a use is not included within the appropriate use code number and the nature of an appeal of the building official's determination of the building official's determination to the zoning board of review. As written, the requesting party appears to first appeal to the building, for the building official's determination. Once that question is addressed, what process to the applicant and zoning board follow to request approval of the special use permit? Are the appeal and the request for a special use permit separate procedures? With separate applications and fees? And then finally, how does the zoning board draft and define the new special use? And some, I think, there are several significant reasons why the proposed amendment should not be adopted in the current form. So that's, that's my story. Thank you.
I'm going to give you Thank you. Are there any other comments with respect to the proposed change?
I have a comment here, if no one else has any. So how I'm seeing this is right now, what we have in 1431 is a use code. And what that means is if you want to change something in your house, or if you have plans, and it's not in these little boxes, these little squares, there's N's and Y's. There's a bunch of them. Just keep going. And so what we have now existing is it goes to the building inspector, and he makes a determination. And if you don't like that determination, you can go to the zoning board. What the Planning Board is trying to amend here today is they want to take out the building inspector, as I see it, and go right to the zoning board. And I'll just read a part of the amendment. "In the event that no response is provided by the building official when at such time the requesting party shall have the right to petition the board for the determination, the requesting party disagrees with the response of the building official, the requesting party shall have the right to appeal the determination to the board." So it looks to me, if I'm understanding it correctly, the building official is going to be taking out of this. He's not going to give a determination. And it's going to go to the zoning board. Am I correct in that?
I don't think
Oh, he gives a determination, but he's not the determining person anymore. As it states now, he is, no? In 1431C?
To say that the zoning official is the determining entity in all cases would ignore the opportunity of the citizen to appeal the decision they've received. So I would say he does not have sole authority, if that's your question, without reference to the zoning board. One can appeal his opinion to the zoning board, even in the event we were to adopt this. And I think you're arguing against adopting this. And in that sense, I am with you, but I don't think it's for the reason you've cited.
Okay.
Perhaps we could ask the Planning Board to
The way I'm looking at this, I think they still have to go to the building official, which always, as long as I've been in town, you go to the building official. It doesn't give you, he'll give you a yes and no. If he gives you a no, you have the right to go to the zoning board and appeal his decision. Then you have the right to go to court if you don't like the appeal from the decision from the zoning board. I'm not really in favor of this myself. The stormwater mitigation plan, I think we should vote on that separately than the whole package. So I have to agree with Larry. This kind of seems like it muddies the waters up more than what it is already.
Thank you. And let me just ask for the reaction of the Planning Board to what's been said.
So with regard to this last amendment to the accessory uses, there's been, since this was announced, the hearing with lots of feedback. And I would say we support the do-nothing approach and leave it the way it is. And so I agree with the comments that have been made. I think with regard to stormwater, we were following the building official's lead in his recommendation from December to incorporate the 600 square feet based on the state's guidelines. And we're happy to support him.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment or council comment that we should entertain prior to considering a vote?
Just, I just got a comment. Who approves a special use permit? The building official?
The zoning board.
The zoning board does? The building official's got to approve it though before it goes to them, doesn't he?
No. And he says you need a special.
Yeah.
He needs to take action.
So he makes you, he makes the applicant take the action to the zoning, okay. That wasn't clear to me. Thank you.
I'll then solicit a motion to close the public hearing.
So move.
Second.
Discussion on that. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Then on the two items following, Councilor Mataronis's recommendation that we consider them separately. With respect to the stormwater mitigation plan proposal, what is your pleasure?
Prove as, prove as written and submitted before us.
Second.
The motion is made and seconded to approve.
I would just like to make, make it very clear that the building official, if I understood him correctly, if you're going to have like a garage or something, it's not going to be residence where you have to go for an ISDS and then a rain garden could put in there relatively cheaply. If it's just a garage or a shed or something like that, then it's just going to have to have a dry well. Correct, Peter? Okay. I just want to make sure that's what I'm voting on.
We'll ask that the minutes include that comment. Is there any further discussion? All in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And now the motion to decline implementation of the change to Section 1431C.
On the advice of the Planning Board and comments that I've heard tonight, I think we should decline adopting this ordinance.
I'll second.
That's the motion. Then this motion is seconded. Is there further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Bob, I'd like to pull under New Business to promotion of firefighter for collective bargaining agreement and recommendation by a chief to the head of the meeting.
Well said, sir. That's the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion on that. All in favor?
Aye.
I'll ask then that firefighter Samuel Hussey come forward and with, well, I'll ask you come forward, sir, to begin. The recommendation we have before us is, as soon as I find it, New Business Two, thank you, is a recommendation from the fire chief that firefighter Samuel Hussey be promoted to lieutenant on the basis of his performance in the selection exam. And he is the sole nominee to the council.
Motion to promote.
Second.
Motion is made and seconded to promote firefighter Hussey to lieutenant. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I'll ask then the family to join. And last, as they assemble here, that the clerk enunciate the oath of office to Lieutenant Hussey. Right.
It's a long road, hasn't it?
Just getting started.
Thank you. The next item of business is announcements. The announcements we have, I would remind you of the fact that if you are a senior, that is, if you are someone who is tender in years.
That was polite, sir.
The little, I speak as someone who knows what he's talking about. The Little Compton Community Center sponsors every Monday, Wednesday, and Friday a luncheon. You need only call ahead. If you can't be there, delivery is available. If you can't find another way to get it, let us know that that's a problem for you, and we'll find a way to get you a meal. We look forward, most of all, they do, to the assembly of the seniors at the community center. And I would encourage each senior to take advantage of that. My second announcement is that the bus search that we have undertaken to attempt to accelerate the procurement of a bus that would replace the bus that we left aside at the beginning of the COVID crisis is nearing completion. We believe that we will be able soon to give you a recommendation as to how we can procure that bus and when we can have it. We have it on good authority that it is in good shape, has specific needs that any used vehicle would have, and those are being addressed right now. And we expect to be able to give you an announcement in the very near future that the bus will be ours.
Just for the record, sir, this bus has a handicap access device attached to it.
It does. It has an ability to load someone who is in a wheelchair and bring them into the vehicle. Thank you. Any other announcements that need to be made? Hearing none. The approval of minutes for August 4th is on the table.
Motion to approve the August 4th, 2022 town council meetings, unless everybody has any questions or comments on them.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Is there discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. The next item of business is the department head reports. We have a single report, that from the police department.
Motion to place the police department report for July on file, unless anybody has any questions or comments on that.
Second.
Discussion on that. All in favor?
Aye.
The next item of business is old business to consider a proposal received by the recreation committee for repairs to the town tennis courts tabled to this meeting at our last meeting. Counselor?
Yes, the recreation committee is still waiting for their meeting on the 29th to decide if they want to go forward with their annual maintenance for fall or wait until March. So we'll have that information on the 29th for our September 1st meeting.
All right. I'll seek then a motion to defer this item to the first meeting in September.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion on that. All in favor? The next item of business is to review and approve the payment plan for the replacement pumper fire engine, which was approved for purchase at our prior meeting on the 4th of August. If you look in your package, you see the payment schedule. The payments that are due on an annual basis are significantly less than our current ambulance reimbursement earnings. So we expect that this payment, as was true of the predecessor machines that we have purchased, will be entirely borne by ambulance billing.
Has the solicitor taken a look at this contract, or is it just a general contract?
It's, this is a resolution that we give to them to tell them that we have need, and it's authorized. To answer your question, no, he is not.
Would it be who of us to have him just take a quick look at it? To protect the town's interest?
I would solicit a motion that...
And then I would move that we go forward. Move that we go forward with this proposal.
What, do you want to make a contingent upon solicitors' review?
Can I finish my motion?
Could you suspend, maybe you could suspend it? I could look at it, we could go back and perhaps vote on it. I think, I think I could do that.
Yeah, sure. I'd like to table this to the end of the meeting.
Mr. President? Mr. President, I would request that you approve a contingent upon the review, so it doesn't withhold the time, so we don't have to come back for another meeting.
He's going to look at it right now. That's why he has to look to the end of the meeting.
Oh, okay.
He's proposing that it move to the end of this meeting.
Right.
Well said. That then is the motion which has been made and seconded. Is there discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The next item of business then is the new business item, a report from the town administrator regarding proposals for town hall renovations that were received on August 19th and reviewed by a team of town officials. The details are in the enclosed memorandum from the administrator, and we would like you to review that and consider possible award of the contract. The administrator is ready to answer any of the questions you may have with respect to that. Specifically, we have received the answer requested from Damon. We've gotten all of the answers to all of our questions. So we have posed a number of questions.
And that hasn't affected Damon's quote?
That has not affected the quote.
So I spoke to the town administrator, maybe the beginning of the week. So are they on a satisfactory timeframe with this?
Yes, they are.
Okay. And all the questions that we discussed have been satisfied by Damon?
Yes, they have.
Okay.
I have a question for the town administrator. If you could just refresh our memory in mind about what the interior of the town hall is going to look like. I would love to create a picture, actually. No. If we look right now where we are, the town council chambers is really the primary item that will be addressed. You know, the painting, the ceiling, obviously, the rug will be removed. The counter that you sit at right now will take a different shape. They'll be semicircle, where you'll be able to face the audience much easier. Let's see, the stairwell will be done as well, both of them. Not just stripped in poly routine again, but the walls will be painted. The halls downstairs, we're going to replace the current linoleum that we have there. And it will be replaced with, in-kind linoleum will be squares, not a full runner. So if there is any damage, it can be replaced much easier. In addition to that, the office, the finance office, there'll be a merger there. The tax assessor will be merging with the finance departments, so both will be in the same room. And there is different reasons for that. One is to make sure that neither of the departments close down during lunch hour, as it has happened, and obviously to no one's fault. But with two employees in each one, what happens is that if one is on vacation, the other one still has to take lunch, was entitled to lunch. So there has been some issues with that, where folks come in and they have to return for service. And the current assessors' office will become a kitchenette rather than have different areas for service in each office. There'll be the kitchenette, and the part of it will be a conference room. That's the interior. Thank you. I'm just concerned about, you know, there's not many places in this building where you can have privacy. And I know you're merging the finance and the assessors. So there won't be much privacy there. I don't know if you're going to have separation in there or some walls in there. I don't know. As you know, and I came in a couple of weeks ago, and I used the town council office for about three and a half hours. One, because it was air-conditioned. But more, but I didn't want to be disturbed. I didn't, you know, because when you're in here, it's like people are walking by and saying hi. And, you know, I don't think it's conducive to, you know, getting things done. So, you know, I would be a little concerned, because I'm trying to picture it. I know we had some schematics on it at a few meetings back. They were kind of small. I had to look through my magnifying glass to see it. But, and we don't have any places we can be private here. And I think we need to have them. So hopefully it's not too late in the game. Actually, the conference room where Denise currently is, that will be the private area, that they can take a client if they have to answer some questions, specific questions. You know, they certainly can meet there. So there'll be one room? Yes. It seems everyone else is going to be merged together. Well, not everybody else. Those two departments. And the building inspector's office will be where? Yeah, it will continue to be. And there is no other change in there with the other offices. So, yeah, so hopefully we could have some privacy, and they could be more efficient that way. That's my opinion.
To your immediate question, there will be three air-conditioned spaces available for conferences. One would be the town council office. One would be the small office adjacent to the town council office. And the third would be the office that is currently occupied by the assessor. Each of those three would either be unoccupied, in the case of two of them, or the occupant could be easily displaced, in the case of the third one. So there are, there will be three air-conditioned spaces. Yeah.
I know you could be redoing, painting, et cetera, in this chamber. Are the windows going to be addressed?
All the windows?
Usually when they paint windows of this type, they rewrote all the weights at the same time. And that way, they'd all be operational without us putting sticks underneath them.
I think it's all new windows, if I'm not mistaken, right? Yes, that's correct. All of these windows are going to be replaced. They must be replaced. They're really in very bad shape. So, yes.
Thanks. Any other questions?
So you want a motion to go forward with this?
I would like a motion to approve a word of the contract to Damon.
Which second?
I move that we appoint, that we make a, that we select Damon as our contractor. And the motion is seconded. Is there further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. The next item of business is to consider joining the inter-local trust, OPEB trust, to assist in offsetting payments for future other post-employment benefits. Very quickly, what happens right now is we ask the citizens of the town for an annual appropriation which funds all of our other than pension employment benefits, specifically healthcare in retirement for those whose contract calls for it. What this would enable us to do is to establish a second source. And that source is a fund that is administered by a professional fund administrator who does OPEB accounts across the state. Actually, I think across, more than the state, across the region.
That's correct.
And we could then, for instance, when we receive a, what's the term? Not a rebate, but a portion of, when the trust decides that the healthcare surplus that it has, which is used for contingency emergencies, is large enough, they distribute that back to the owners of the healthcare plan. In this case, we receive a portion of that. That's a destination for such funds. We could put those funds into this trust, which would then gradually increase our corpus of funds that are available to pay for retirement healthcare for employees. That would then have the ultimate impact of reducing the call on an annual basis from the citizens of the town to fund healthcare and retirement. So I think it's a smart idea. It's well-administered. It's got lots of kudos. Everybody who's in it thinks it's great. Our proposal is that we join that trust, and I request a motion.
I propose we join the inter-local trust to assist us in offsetting payments.
Second.
The motion I would like to reflect that is to join the inter-local trust, OPEB trust. I realize the word trust is used twice there. Once in a name of an organization, secondly, in a fund which is a...
Sir, yes, sir.
The motion then is to join the inter-local trust, OPEB trust. It's been made and seconded. Is there further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. The next item of business is the Veterans Week 2022 has two requests. As last year, Cora Rocha has requested to place a banner, this time to display the names of past and present veterans at Pike's Peak from the period November 7th to November 13th.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion on that. All in favor?
Aye.
And then the second is from Caroline Wilkie Wardell, who is with us this evening, her request to discuss proposing a Veterans Day project. If you could speak to us, we'd be grateful. Thanks. I have been provided my own copy of that. Thank you.
Caroline Wilkie Wardell, Williams, Sisson Road. I'm here tonight to request the use of Pike's Peak for an event honoring our veterans on November 11th, which you all know as Veterans Day. Several years ago, I saw a field of flags at Sturbridge Village honoring veterans from all over the country. I thought at that time that this would be a wonderful thing to do in Little Compton on Pike's Peak, albeit on a smaller scale than Sturbridge. My plan would be to solicit sponsorship from citizens of the town who would like to donate $5 for a 12-by-16 flag to honor their family member or friend who served in the military. The net amount realized by these donations, the only cost would be the flags, would be donated to a veterans' organization. I've requested to attend the next meeting of the American Legion in Little Compton to ask for their help and support. I'm only asking the town for the use of this public property. November 11th is on a Friday. I would like to allow these flags to fly at least for that weekend. I will be responsible for placing the flags and removing them. Thank you.
Any questions?
I see no problem with allowing this to go forward with all of town stipulations that need to be adhered to, if there are any.
Is that your motion?
Yes, it is.
I'll second it.
The motion's made and seconded to approve the request, and it's for a specific period that also incorporates the item we just approved. I see no conflict there or inability to do both at the same time. And I wonder if there are any other comments or questions. Hearing none. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Thanks for the idea. I think it's a...
Thank you, Caroline.
Appropriate one. Next is a request to use Veterans Field on September 26th for the Little Compton Prevention Coalition's annual family dinner celebration of 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. was set up at 5:30 p.m., and the head of the coalition is with us this evening.
I don't see a problem with this going forward either. So I'll make a motion to approve as requested.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Any discussion?
Let's probably watch the speaker on it.
... Annual family dinner celebration. For the... Full act here of a... And to... Be hard to be there just for a family day. It's really important for them to sit down with their young children. Children, um, at least once a week. Do a dinner and that thing. But keep that up. We decided to do a payment. So we supply any family member that was over school. They're supposed to be, and their family members, uh, box, dinner, lunch, from here. Have an online work form, class, every day about 20 times a week.
Sounds like a very nice project, and I commend you on your going forward with this.
Thanks. Those who then participate are provided that dinner. Very good. All right. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Thanks for bringing that forward. Finally, under old business, new business, rather, a request from Corporal Caitlin Farrar and firefighter Jason DeSilva to use Veterans Field parking area for the trunk-or-treat event on October 22nd.
Motion to approve. Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Communications, a request from Kevin Gilstrap, doing business as neighborhood handyman, requesting a license to haul refuse to the transfer station.
I mean, is this, is he going to become a commercial haul like the other fellows we have in town?
He's a handyman who cleans out garages or cellars or that sort of thing. He doesn't pick up your normal trash.
Okay.
He has run into this problem, but he can't do it without a license.
Okay. Are these, do they generally have to go in front of the police department or anything, or any? Yeah, okay. All right, long as he's not going to compete with our regular town trash haulers, we can...
That is not the intent.
Motion to approve then?
Motion to approve.
Motion is made and seconded to approve. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. A copy of a letter from the Town of Exeter to the Reliant League of Cities and Towns requesting the league's support for legislation that can mitigate the negative effects of House Bill 8220, substitute A. It's an act relating to taxation, levying, assessment of local taxes. This bill limits potential taxing benefits for utility-scale solar arrays by municipalities. Since receipt of this, yes, sir, I'll be right with you. Since receipt of this, this bill has in fact become law. The governor did not sign it, but it became law as a result of his having it presented to him, and he didn't sign it. Yes, sir.
No, that's where I was going. I said if this is all kind of a mute point, no.
Motion placed on file.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded to place on file. Any discussion?
I'm just going to abstain.
Okay. All in favor? Aye. Four in favor with one abstention. Counselor Golubski. The consent file.
Motion.
I'd like to take two things out.
There's only two, so...
Two things, not three.
Go ahead.
I'll just paraphrase it. There's a letter from Frank Hagerty and Nancy Howard. I'll paraphrase the Mayflower Wind Project. They're skeptical about the growth beyond what is being presented now, the unproven technology, the environmental unknowns. As you know, we've hired a lawyer to look after Little Compton's interest in this moving forward. And at some time, I would imagine, we would be reporting back to our constituents on where we've gone with this issue.
So, well, I've been in the loop with this, with all of these. I seem to be the contact person after I put together a package what would affect us in the Secana River, the town of Little Compton. So I think, I think we might be discussing this in the executive session, if I'm not misinforming.
You are correct. This is the issue.
So we should have some information tonight, Patrick.
All right. We will come out of executive session.
Right, we will come out of executive session and be in public session. So I don't know if there'll be more discussion on it then.
When you come back in the public session, you'll be disclosing any votes that you may need.
Yeah.
But I doubt that it'll be another full discussion on the subject.
Can't. Right, thanks.
Any discussion of those matters? Are you, is there then a motion to place these two matter, these two items on file?
Sir.
Would you address the issue of the firefighter?
Oh, yeah, the, the.
Yeah, I will. I, I do have that. I'm sorry, down here. Thank you for the reminder. I'm not going to close off yet. Then I would.
Motion placed on file.
Place on file.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Then matter OBO business two, which is the matter associated with the fire apparatus.
Payment plan.
The, the solicitor's recommendation is that we approve this less of a resolution. I would entertain a motion thereby.
Motion to approve.
Discussion on that. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. The payment of bills.
Motion to pay bills as presented.
Second. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Declare a recess and invite the public to depart. We will continue with an executive session at the appropriate time thereafter. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen.